Regular City Council Meeting for March 21, 2023. Please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abudhamas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Moving on in our agenda, report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me first remark that consistent with the provisions of legislation governing virtual participation in public meetings, AB 2449, Councilmember David Oro is participating consistent with the provisions of that act under what is known as an individual choice for stated cause. So although he's virtual, there is an established quorum at this meeting place and participation by Councilmember Oro is appropriate under all circumstances and in compliance with the Brown Act. There will also be a formal notation of his participation under AB 2449 in the minutes for this meeting. Having said that, with respect to the closed session, the council convened an open session, including virtual open session through four Councilmember David Oro at 5:33 PM, ascertained that there were no comments on the matters agendized for closed session consideration and adjourned to closed session at that time. The closed session concluded at 6:17 PM. And with respect to each of the matters agendized for closed session consideration, I will prepare a written report consistent with the provisions of 5497.1. That would conclude the report upon return from closed session unless there are questions.
Any questions from council?
No.
Seeing on hearing on? Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll proceed with our agenda. Proclamations and presentations. It gives us very special evening this evening to recognize a very special person to American Canyon. We're going to recognize Fran Lemos as Congressman Mike Thompson's Napa County Woman of the Year. Congratulations. Mr. Foote, congratulations.
Good job, Fran.
Thank you. Thank you all.
This is a recognition of everything you have been doing and have always done for this city, this community.
I love our community.
You are truly a champion of our city.
Thank you very much.
And this is something that we appreciate. All your diligence.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is proclamation. It's very important to many people in this community. And I'm very proud as a state council to provide this proclamation for our community. It's acknowledging Ramadan. This proclamation is as follows. Acknowledging the Muslim holiday of Ramadan, whereas Islam is one of the world's major religions and part of our shared human heritage, and whereas California Muslim community is one of the most diverse in the nation with ethnic and cultural backgrounds that span the globe, whereas Muslims have a long history in the United States spanning back to the slave trade, which 10% to 15% of our enslaved African women and men were said to be Muslim, whereas Muslims have long served in the nation's armed forces and fought in all major United States wars, from the American Revolutionary War to the modern conflicts today, with some Muslim Americans making the ultimate sacrifice in combat, whereas Muslims have contributed to the social movement throughout the history of the United States to work toward justice and fair inclusion for all, whereas Muslims have contributed to, for the early years as pioneers to our present day leaders, Muslim Americans have played a significant role in history of the state's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, and whereas there are approximately 1 million Muslim Americans across this state contributing to the economy, social fabric, multicultural, and pleuristic traditions, and whereas the Muslim residents of the state with their hard work and contributions to medicine, science, information technology, education, police, military, and many other fields have benefited from and enriched the state's open, tolerant, and economic environment, and whereas Ramadan is the holy month of fasting, a time to reflect spiritually, build communal, and aid those in need, and marks an annual spiritual renewal for each individual a reason to celebrate and express gratitude in this month, whereas the observance of Muslim holy months of Ramadan commences at dusk on March 22, 2023, and continues for one lunar month, from sunrise to sunset each day. Now therefore be resolved, in observance of and out of respect for the commencement of Ramadan, the American Canyon City Council acknowledges the onset of Ramadan and expresses its deepest respect to Muslims across California and throughout the world on this significant occasion. As I say, Assalamu Alaykum.
Ramadan 2023 starts the evening of Wednesday, March 22, lasting 30 days and ending at sundown on Thursday, April 20. Determined by either an actual sighting of the moon with a naked eye or through astronomical calculations, Ramadan, the ninth month of the Islamic lunar calendar. Muslims abstain from all food and drink from dawn to sunset. This religious duty of fasting is known as Sa'um, which is fasting in Arabic. It is one of the five pillars or basic acts of worship in Islam. Ramadan, month of the Quran, month of fasting, month of giving, month of light, month of patience, month of remembrance. We welcome you wholeheartedly, oh month of Ramadan. Welcome to our homes and welcome to our hearts. Good evening. My name is Amal Ahmad from the Islamic Center of Vallejo. We serve the area of Vallejo, American Canyon, and Benicia. It is with great honor that I am here with you today, accepting a proclamation in recognition of the holy month of Ramadan. On the behalf of the Muslim community, I would like to thank the American County Council and Councilwoman Miriam Abu Damus in particular for making this happen. We truly appreciate it. Furthermore, in recognition of Women's History Month, I would like to recognize all of the women in this room today for your countless achievements. You truly are all superstars, and thank you for having us, and we appreciate this. It's a special.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a picture?
Would I take pictures? All right, I can. Next on our agenda this evening is a June presentation. We're going to receive a presentation from Brenda Knight. Good evening, Brenda, welcome. And the American Canyon Arts Foundation regarding the city of American Canyon's 2022 Juneteenth event and discuss upcoming plans for the 2023 Juneteenth event.
Before I start the quick video, I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and I proved today that I am a tough person.
Good.
My hot water heater broke.
Oh, no.
So I've been in the garage all day scooping up water, and when I looked at the time, it was a quarter to six. And so I'm just glad I made it out. Fran, congratulations. Congratulations. And I'm here. Can we, can we start the video?
Brenda, just take a deep breath, relax, you're here. Thank you. Do we have an audio?
Yep. What's up?
It's on it and at 100% right now, so.
There's really beautiful music that goes with it.
All right, do we have a technical assistance to get the audio? Do we have our audio technician this evening?
It's all right, I'm trying to solve them.
Teresa, no.
Okay, just.
All right.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the video?
I asked for it in front of the USB drive.
So is it here? Okay, yeah. Bear with me. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so that was just a synopsis of what happened last year at our first annual Juneteenth celebration. And here we are. The time went by so fast. We're getting ready to prepare and celebrate our second anniversary. And again, we will be at the same place, which is Main Street Park, right across the street. We will have a different type of program this year. We are going to be celebrating and having a community, a Juneteenth Community Fest, celebrating our history and culture through art, through dance, and through music. I have several dancers lined up, praise dancers, the mime, we have ballet dancer, we have African dancers who will be performing. We celebrate through art. We have African-American artists who will have on display their artwork and also painting while there. And then through our music, we will have jazz, R&B. We will have also gospel at the beginning. And so we look forward, and it's live entertainment. So you'll be able to come out and enjoy. There will be food trucks. We will also have Need to Contact. Janelle, I forgot to call her before the meeting. Hope you're watching, Janelle. So we can have our kids on. And last year, we were, out of all the cities in our area, we were named as the best Juneteenth celebration around.
Right on. Bravo.
And so with that.
Brenda, a special thanks to you for making that happen.
Well, thank you so much.
Everybody who helped.
So with that, I have to raise the bar a little. So we are going to have a wonderful time. I'm hoping everyone come out because it is a community thing. You know, American Canyon just celebrates everything. I'm glad I came tonight. Tonight was the one night for me to be here to give a presentation, which shows how much we celebrate diversity. Last week, I missed yours. I'm sorry, Arvin, you know. But I've been here 20 years, and I just love this place. And so here we are now getting ready to do our Juneteenth celebration. And you can come out, bring your family. Yes, it is on June 18, which is Father's Day. Let me explain why. Juneteenth is a family celebration. So you come out with your families, and you enjoy. You can sit out on the grass. You can sit all around the park. My security guy told me we had about 850 people who came through to see the event last year. And so we invite you to come. I'm telling you, you will have just a wonderful time. Clarence, you want to tell them what else to expect?
Sure, of course. So it's hard to follow Brenda, seriously, right? But, well, I'm Clarence Mamreal, President of the American Canyon Arts Foundation, and we are so proud and happy and privileged to be partnering with Brenda again and her production, production of Juneteenth. So in addition to things Brenda mentioned, artistic wise, yeah, we want to have artists on site creating Juneteenth-inspired art right on site. And also, the American Canyon Art Foundation will be selling wine and beer and margaritas like we did last year. And there is also, we're repeating the parking and shuttle service and also security for the event. I also just wanted to emphasize that, you know, we have taken the lessons of last year in terms of flow and improved upon them. We want to make it this Juneteenth a celebration, you know, real celebration of African-American emancipation. So I do want to emphasize the music and the art and the dancing. There is going to be, while there is an African-American history component, it won't be, we have de-emphasized, Brenda in all her wisdom has de-emphasized the speeches. So it really will be just a big old party in Main Street Park. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. And I'm not sure if this is just a presentation or if we're going to be accepting questions from council, but we're open for that. Absolutely.
And for those here, the Juneteenth is the celebration of our freedom. We were a little late finding out that the slaves had been freed. And so what I am doing this year is bringing in a speaker to speak about the Juneteenth history, so you can take away what that is. The celebration part is what happened after we received our freedom and how much we had did and how much we've accomplished and all the things that we were able to do with having black cities all around the United States. And so that's the part that I look forward to celebrating. And you know what? The communities need a time out just to be together, just to laugh, just to talk. And now for me, my water heater that's at home leaking. And that's what I got, Mayor, for, I'm celebrating 20 years of being in American Canyon this month.
All right, guys. Good to have you here.
So I didn't get upset because I said, well, the water heater's been going good for 20 years. So I look forward of everyone being there to just celebrate, come out, have a good time, learn some history, get along with other people, laugh and talk, bring your children. And guys, come, because every man that enters the gate receives a raffle ticket. And we give away raffle prizes to the men. Now, let me tell you what you do. If you want to celebrate Father's Day, go to brunch or go to dinner. We're the in-between. Okay, so go to brunch, have your meal, come out and celebrate with us. You're going to have so much fun enjoying and listening to all the music. If you want to go, come to us first, come to us, and then go to dinner, because you know what you would do? You would sit at your dinner and talk about the day that you just have. Because one thing, I guarantee you, if you come, you will have the best time ever. And before you know it, I'll be standing here talking about the third annual Juneteenth celebration. Thank you, council. I didn't greet you, so greetings to the council, to Jason and everybody here. You know me, I look forward to coming and just making my announcements. So I'm gonna go back home, take these clothes off, put on my jogging pants, and finish cleaning up the mess, get ready for my water heater appointment in the morning.
Brenda.
So I look forward to seeing you. Yes, Mark.
One, one quick comment, because your water heater just went out. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you there's federal funding out there for rebates to replace your water heater with an electric one that's energy efficient, so.
Okay, I will talk to them and make, oh, make sure it's electric, right?
That's electric, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So just a little, you're lucky your water heater went out. You can upgrade. The good news and all that.
Brenda, I also.
Look forward to working, doing this on behalf of the city of American Canyon and with the Arts Foundation. So if there are any questions, we're ready.
Brenda, I just have a comment. You've already sold my dad, because I saw him putting it in his calendar. So happy, happy early Father's Day, Daddy. That's what we're doing.
Very good. Thank you, Brenda. I mean, I know it all comes from the heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, then we'll move on with our agenda. Do we have any public comments? Any item not on the agenda?
Yes, we do. Mayor Garcia, I'm gonna call Arvin Nishal.
There's somebody I know.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Arvin Nishal. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, all the city officials. And I have a lady, young lady over here, our first lady in town, Eva Garcia. So last week, we celebrated this event, Holy Festival, Festival of Colors. It's a very famous festival in India, and I started this event 11 years ago. And everybody loved this event, and they join it and keep on growing. So this time, it was raining a little bit, but we were determined to do it, and we did it. And everybody loved it. So we have about 60, 70 people show up, and everybody enjoyed it. You want to say something, Eva? Come on, come on, come on. Say something.
Wow. I'm very proud of our city, and as we could see, everyone are here, and we love everyone in American Canyon. I worked downstairs for a long time, and you know, I met all the employees of our city. And you know what? You cannot train kindness to our employee, but they are all so kind. They're so passionate. And even the residents of American Canyon, first time I saw Fran, I said, wow, this, the spirit that you share to us, just your presence, even though you don't talk, it is so alive.
She talks sometime.
It is so alive that it is so heartwarming to live here in American Canyon, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I do celebrate a couple of events in town, like a multicultural event. So I gather all the communities together, all the communities in American Canyon, because it's a diversity city. So they come and they perform their culture, and we're doing from last 10 years about this issue. And everybody enjoyed it. The way they dance, the way they present their culture is really good. So I will show you some pictures who attended this event. And this is children playing over there with the colors. And they are from American Canyon. They enjoyed it. And this is myself. And we have children again. And this is our mayor, Leon Garcia, and the lady is there. And we are.
We had a good time.
And our sheriff from Napa, Oscar, he's there. And we have some Clarities there playing this picture. And my wife and her friend came from Dublin to this event. And all these participants over here, and you can see Ellie is talking over there. Ellie loved this event. There she is. And this is the picture came from the one over neighbor. And this is Eva Garcia and our friend playing with the holy, and they're all colorful. So this is Ellie and Clarence is playing over there. And Brent Cooper is on the back with Brent. Hey, it is. Thank you. Thank you, Brent. And we have Janelle and Oscar Ortiz and myself over there in the picture. And we have Janelle and Oscar Ortiz and myself over there in the picture. And this is Bailey, I was playing over there. And she enjoyed this color. Every year she come over there, and she loved it. And we have, oh, this is a wonderful picture, Ellie, we have for you. And this is a group picture for all the participants in this event. And they enjoyed it, so we will do it again. And we will do by the end of March, last Sunday of March, I'm presenting it. Because sometimes the weather is not cooperating, so we will try to do it better. And we have a tent over there this time, we have a wonderful food, everybody loved the food, and they enjoyed it. So, thanks very much who came to participate in this event. And thanks to those people also who didn't come, but they promised to come next time. She said she's coming, she's coming, but we're waiting for that, that's fine. I know, I saw this.
Thank you for your presentation. We look forward to next year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we get any other public comment on matters not on the agenda?
We do. Valerie Zizak-Mores.
Hello, everyone. I'm Valerie Zizak-Mores, president, CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to come by tonight to give a few updates on some things we're working on. As you know, I was here a few weeks ago, and we asked for permission to have the fees waived for the kids' commerce. I just wanted to give an update that the program is going amazing. We have twenty-nine business entrepreneurs that are youth. We have four that are going into the food vending, which takes an additional county permit. We've been working closely on the business plan, the budget, how to count money, how to take money, and the program is coming together great. So, I just want to thank the City of American Canyon for supporting us in this, and Jason Hawley, who showed up to our first event to welcome everybody into the program. So, thank you very much for that. Also, I want to give an update on Meet Me in the Street, if you're not familiar with the event. We have designed an event to create an atmosphere where we can connect business with community, because we hear continuously that that is lacking within our community. So, last event, we pulled in over seven thousand people, one hundred and twenty-five business tables, over forty food trucks, and a live band, and just an atmosphere where everybody in American Canyon can get to know each other and feel that sense of community. So, we're really excited to bring it back the second Wednesday of June, July, and August. I want to invite everybody in the room to join us and everybody here in the City of American Canyon. This is the one event where I feel like we bring in every single aspect of American Canyon, along with the rest of the county as well. So, if you're unfamiliar with the event, please check it out. We blocked down all four lanes behind Safeway between James and Elliott Drive, and it is a wonderful event to connect with your local community. We're also super excited to talk about a hike that we're having on Friday night in conjunction with the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation. This is going to be a photography hike, where we teach you how to take photography. And this photography is going to be entered into a contest, where you could potentially be featured on our Explore American Canyon social media platform. And we are just trying to capture the most beautiful scenes of American Canyon to highlight that to our tourists. Because if you don't know, we also are the destination marketing organization and the welcome center in American Canyon. So, we're extremely excited to bring these platforms to you, and we hope to see everybody supporting the events that we're doing. Thank you very much, and thank you for the diversity and the amazing opportunities we also have going here in American Canyon. It's so wonderful to see everybody working together and really just supporting this community. And thank you, council, for everything you do for the City of American Canyon.
Thank you for your presentation.
Wait, Valerie? The hike? The hike is where and what time? I'm sorry, the hike is going to be at Wetlands Edge. We're going to be meeting in the parking lot at 6:00 PM Friday night. So, if you're interested in joining us, it's open to the public. It's going to be an easy hike that's kid-friendly. Bring your cameras, bring your phones, and we'll teach you how to take amazing photos. Thank you.
That information is also on the city events calendar, so if you want to look for it. Very good. Thank you for that, we look forward to it.
Okay.
Any other comment from items not on?
Yeah, Jason Kishneff.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jason Kishneff. I represent Napa College Board for American Canyon, but I will not be speaking for the college or for the board this evening. Thank you.
Are you taking a selfie?
It's there somewhere.
No. What's that? I can't hear you.
Is it charging?
No, no. How you guys doing this evening?
You having difficulty bringing up your speech?
Don't tell me you have stage fright.
Not me.
Excuse me, tell you what we could do, we could take another speaker, and you can get your message, and you can come back.
No, I'm all together.
Okay, oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Kishneff, we do need to move on with our meeting, too, so...
No, I have three minutes, I'm good. Ninety seconds can seem like a really long time when nothing else is happening, can't it?
Oh, okay.
This is what it's like sometimes for those of us who live on Fosden Road, when we're trying to turn left into or out of our street at the traffic signals. I talked to the previous Public Works Director about this, but he didn't feel that anything needed to change, excuse me, between the hours of nine AM and six PM specifically. So, I thought that I would make my point again, albeit somewhat more dramatically. Thank you for your indulgence.
Oh, well, thank you, I realize that what you're doing, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Is there another speaker?
Natalie Aliga.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Garcia, esteemed council members, city officials, staff, and community members. My name is Natalie Aliga. I'm a first-generation Filipino-American. I was born in Oakland, grew up in Vallejo, and became a proud resident of American Canyon in the summer of 2018. My purpose for speaking here tonight is to share my personal experience in the current cohort of the Leadership Napa Valley Program, Class Thirty-Five, which will also be known as the best class ever, and to encourage those who live or work in American Canyon to submit applications for the next cohort. For those who may not know about Leadership Napa Valley, or LNV, it is a nationally-recognized, award-winning program that was founded in 1987. Our mission is to identify, inspire, train, and motivate current and future local leaders. We have an alumni network of over eight hundred graduates, many of whom serve in leadership roles within their companies, in city and county departments, on commissions, nonprofit boards, and as elected officials. As a corporate professional, I have participated in several leadership training programs, including Leadership Contra Costa, hosted by the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce. I can attest that LNV has been one of the most enriching and personally rewarding programs I've ever experienced. As a relatively new resident in Napa County, I was looking for a way to get more involved, feel more connected, expand my personal and professional network. Additionally, our two daughters are currently attending American Canyon Middle School, and our eldest will be entering American Canyon High School this fall. I was interested in what the future holds for Napa Valley and have witnessed a lot of change and growth in the short amount of time we've lived here. I wanted to know who the decision-makers were, understand processes, programs, community needs, issues, trends, and challenges affecting our life here. At first, the time commitment of nine months seemed daunting, but we're quickly approaching graduation, and I'm sad that our formal time together is going to end. I benefited in many ways from deep-dive discussions on issues like tourism, agriculture, and criminal justice, and received personal development insights that built my confidence and helped me understand my own leadership strengths and to discover them in others. I've also made lifelong friendships with other emerging and current leaders in Napa Valley, such as our Public Works Director, Erika Aman Smithis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold Collins.
Yeah, I think I just commented on that, it was, I think Councilmember Joseph was in Leadership, what class?
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I think there was a misunderstanding, and Class Fourteen, I think, was the best class, so Thirty-Five might be second best, I don't know.
Well, I was in Class Six, and, you know, we were, we always thought of ourselves as second, as in second to none. I'm sorry, sir, please go ahead.
Hello, thank you all, nice to meet, speak with you all. Hello, my name is Harold Collins. I'm a resident of American Canyon for the last twelve years and a current participant in the best class ever, Leadership Napa Valley, Class Thirty-Five. When I initially began the process to apply for the LNV program, I had a few doubts of what some might say is imposter syndrome, where you have questions of, "Do I really belong here? Are my skills and qualifications in part with others? Is this a program where your voice will be heard and your views will add to the conversation?" The Leadership Napa Valley model is designed to bring forth the best qualities that exist in all of us and subsequently cast all dots aside. One of the primary goals of LNV is to seek out thirty members for each class that represent a diverse cross-section of Napa Valley. Although the program is nine months, the length of engagement in the first week is so meaningful and impactful, you quickly discover that we all have a voice, and there are members throughout our communities that are eager to listen. I feel that we can all agree that a strength of American Canyon is our diversity. Unfortunately, where in many cities diversity divides, in our, in American Canyon, I've experienced diversity that leads to engagement and understanding. The LNV program is a great opportunity for members of American Canyon to share our community's diversity and voice with leaders throughout the valley. I encourage anyone interested in learning more about LNV's exciting opportunities to visit leadershipnapavalley.org, where you will find the current class calendar and an overview of the program scope. In addition, there are multiple examples of the meaningful projects that past class members have organized that continue to have a lasting impact in our communities. For those who may be interested, the current application period for the upcoming Class Thirty-Five, with a deadline of April 21st, is now available. There will also be an in-person information session on March 30th, 5:30 PM, at the Western Veraza in Napa, where I hope to see many of you there. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Russell Sharpentier.
The, we look forward to welcoming both of you as alumni of Leadership Napa Valley. Thank you for what you're doing out there.
Dear city council members, good evening. Myself and a small group of citizens have been coming before you for months now. We have been warning you of the consequences to our city if we don't take action against Vallejo to move or modify their Broadway Home Key project. So far, our pleas have fallen on deaf ears. I've been told by the city manager that American Canyon does not have an actionable position in this fight. Your June 7th complaint letter, signed by all of you, presented to the City of Vallejo Council would lead me to believe otherwise. Myself and others have been out in the neighborhoods, taking, talking to residents and taking names. Quite frankly, most are appalled when they learn the details of the potential threat this project presents to their children and the community, and the likely impact it will have on all of us and the surrounding communities. Don't take my word for it. Read the City of Vallejo's Home Key application and see for yourself what wraparound services this project does and does not actually provide. As far as Shelter Inc.'s management of this project is concerned, their performance has been abysmal in the past. That info is all over Nextdoor, our community blog. If the City of Vallejo is allowed to turn our southern border communities and our Veterans Park into a tenderloin, then we will have the inaction of the city council to thank for it. When the next election season comes around, as it surely will, and we are starting to feel the impact of this project on our community, when you are asked, "What was your position on the Broadway Home Key project?", how will you answer? Thank you.
Thank you.
William Baker.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. On Monday afternoon, I wrote to you about the new phase of the Broadway Project SECA complaint case. We are no longer strictly in a dispute with the City of Vallejo, but at the suggestion of the Solano County Court, we are now in arbitration, seeking an amicable resolution to this process. I also listed goals we feel are a win-win for each side of this dispute, to declare victory by adjusting the target tenant demographic from chronically homeless to what we hope will be a more suitable group, recently homeless elderly in need of medical care. I also outlined goals that address parking and in-house security issues. We feel these goals will be a win-win solution for the SECA process that began in early August. We also ask that the City of American Canyon join us in this arbitration process. We believe this is appropriate, as the city's presence will directly affect the enforceability and commitment of any settlement reached. This project will be in effect for fifty years, long after the plaintiffs will be around to ensure compliance. Therefore, we need a party representing the park and community for the duration of the conditions the City of Vallejo and the Broadway Project have obliged themselves. We also feel that this is an opportunity for the City of American Canyon to offer services to our new neighbors in the Broadway Project that will assist them in to re-enter society. I have included a few low-cost, high-impact suggestions in my email report to you. For example, the American Canyon sublet bus could be extended to these residents on a regular basis to our post office, library, grocery, and drugstore, and civic events like the Fourth of July Parade and the Christmas tree lighting activities. This next phase of arbitration also costs money. The plaintiffs have invested out-of-pocket more than three times the amount we are requesting the city to contribute. We have also devoted well over a thousand hours researching this topic and sharing our views on and offline. Now is the time for the City of American Canyon to represent its citizens, to protect its parks and neighborhoods. Join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yvonne Beginski.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Nice to be here today. I hope you're all paying attention to the news yesterday. A report was released by the United Nations. It warns that the planet is on track of catastrophic warming. This report was a compromise, a collaborative effort by top climate scientists representing two hundred countries. That means that the most frightening parts were probably omitted to avoid a global panic. It said, "We aren't going to be able to avoid the catastrophe of the impacts of global warming." You know that 1.5-degree rise in centigrade that they're predicting will happen by 2030? Well, some scientists are saying they're expecting that to actually happen this summer. That's only a few months away. With El Niño coming in, the ocean's going to release a lot of heat, a lot, and the world's going to change. Actually, that's already happening. But we might be able to soften this impact. The stress is on the immediate change being made now, not in three years, not next year, but now. The report provides crucial guidance to politicians on reining in climate change. That's you. You're the politicians. Even here in American Canyon, you are being asked to set policies and guidance. I'm asking the city council and all of our communities in Napa County to look at every potential path forward on any action we take to include reducing our reliance on fossil fuels. There is no doubt that fossil fuels are the driver of climate change, and the United States spews the carbon the most into the world's air. Frankly, I felt really hopeless when I heard this news yesterday. But I'm here before you today. I know you won't be able to do this alone. There is a strength in numbers. You have a draft of an actionable climate action plan. The actions outlined in this plan need to start now. The Tenet to Do No More Harm should be a guiding principle. Right now, the Planning Commission is considering allowing another drive-through restaurant to be built in American Canyon. The City Council could meet with the Planning Commission, develop a no-idling ordinance for the city, and include a ban on future drive-through development. That's an action you can all take together now. Stopping chicken guys from a two-lane drive-through is a very simple request, but it sends a message of change to all of us. A message that the children and families of your constituency will appreciate in the otherwise dark days we are warned are ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victor. Victor.
How you doing, Mayor? Councilpeople, my name is Victor. I see everybody talking about, about all the.
You can adjust the microphone, sir.
I'm sorry, right here?
Yeah, yeah, it moves.
To my.
There you go. Better.
Would that work for you?
Yeah, it's working now, thank you, sir.
I hear the echo, there. Um, most people talking about a lot of other different things, but I have one main concern. I'm a veteran, disabled, I'm a father, grandfather, I'm a widow as well. But, um, thank you, I moved into American Canyon in twenty nineteen, and my main problem that I've been seeing is that my water bill has been going up considerably. When I first started, I was paying like ten dollars a month. And now, since you guys allocated conserve to do our water, my bill is like maybe eighty dollars a month. And back in August, uh, my bill went up to a hundred and fifty-three dollars. And as I understand it, the meter is malfunctioning. And the people where I'm at placed in an order back in August, and it just showed up maybe about a week ago. They still haven't fixed the problem. I also heard there's people that live in my same building are paying like over six hundred dollars. And I have some concern, and I talked to management, but it seemed like it's a slow roll. So the question, since you allow conserve to come into American Canyon and, um, allocate the water, um, what can you do about it to make sure it affects the meters? And, um, like I said, it's been going on since August of last year. So, I'm just addressing that concern, um, which I think is very important. So, I don't know, I don't say, but something that needs to be done. And I have reached out to them, but I'm not getting any answers.
Maybe, uh, Mr. Hawley, could we look into that meter? Uh, could also be a leak within, uh, the pipes somewhere.
Well, they looked in all the units, and it, and they just came out and said that there's something wrong with the transmission.
All right.
Whatever they've done, but that was a week ago, and it only took them, what, five months to come down here since August?
Well, uh, Mr. Hawley will direct staff to check that out, okay?
I appreciate that. Also, one other problem, PG&E with MCE. It was pretty, very hard to opt out of that program. I never asked to be part of MCE. My beige, my, my phone bill is like three times as high, and I guess that's another entity that you guys allowed to put on our PG&E, PG&E, and I'm kind of concerned about that. But I was able to opt out about a week ago, but I'd be, I think my life cycle will probably be within next month.
Right.
But thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, sir. Next speaker, please.
Okay, I have no other speaker cards, but I do have a hand raised, uh, on Zoom. I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, good evening, Justin.
Hi, hi, Mayor, hi, Dior. Um, I have a quick question, I, I just, I just.
Justin can barely hear you. Can you?
Do you hear me?
Get close to the microphone or turn up the volume, please.
Are you hearing me? Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Yes.
So, I, I looking over my house and the hall bone, the telephone bolt line, and I worry about that too. That, uh, that gonna be gonna be falling down. Um, I think we need to get somebody come out there and do a survey, because, uh, my house is okay, but net house down is the full night going to tip over because due to wind. So there, there we, um, there way we can just have looked at. Hopefully soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Hawley, could somebody send staff over to check that out, please?
Yeah.
All right.
It's not our.
Thank you, Justin.
Not our poll, Mayor, but we'll see if we can have someone go and, um, take a look at.
Get an idea of what's going on there.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
Okay. So that concludes our public comment on matters not on the agenda. And public comment on these, this item is closed. We'll move on to our, uh, agenda. Agenda changes. Counsel, if there's no, uh, interest in pulling a item from the consent calendar, I'll accept the motion to accept it. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I'll second. Motion second? Roll call, please. We'll take them over here, let the chamber settle.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council. Moving on now with public hearings. Uh, item ten, uh, twenty-twenty-two Calendar Year Housing Element Progress Report. Who are of course very interested in this.
Is the slideshow being shown?
It's on there. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the, uh, City Council and, uh, members of the public. My name is William, I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm, uh, very excited to be here today to give a, uh, report on the housing progress for the City of American Canyon. So let's get right into it. Last year, twenty-twenty-two, was the last year of the fifth cycle of the housing element, which, uh, started in March of twenty fifteen. The state requires a annual progress report, uh, that highlights the work that the city has accomplished. And this report is given to, uh, the Housing and Community Development Department and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So, twenty-twenty-two was an exciting year. The, the state, uh, HCD, requires, um, every local jurisdiction to look at a, uh, housing, uh, from three perspectives, which is entitlements, um, building permits issued, and number of houses that were completed, uh, which is the certificates of occupancy. So, uh, if we look at twenty-twenty-two, for entitlements, uh, we only received six, which were all from accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. But, uh, building permits issued was a very exciting year. Uh, we issued a hundred and fifty-six units for, uh, housing. Um, they consisted of, uh, two ADUs, um, sixty-six units from the Napa Cove Project, which is in the Broadway District. And then forty-four units from the Watson Ranch Artisan Subdivision, and forty-four units from the Watson Ranch Harvest Subdivision, which are both in the Watson Ranch specific plan. So all total, a hundred and fifty-six units there. And then lastly, for, uh, uh, housing units that were completed, uh, the, uh, four ADUs were completed last year. Sorry for the typo up there, not a hundred and sixty-one, but four. So, um, that's the, uh, the, the numbers in a nutshell. I do want to go over, um, what the assignment was for the housing element, which is, uh, what they call the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, which, uh, is short for RENA. And this is kind of like, uh, every local jurisdiction's homework. And, um, our assignment was, uh, since twenty fifteen, was three hundred and ninety-two units, uh, which is also split into different tier groups of, uh, in, divided by income. So of the three hundred and ninety-two units that needs to be, um, that was in RENA, it was a hundred and sixteen units for very low, fifty-four units for low income, fifty-eight units for moderate income, and then a hundred and sixty-four units for above moderate. So, I'm pleased to inform the, the, uh, the Council that, uh, not only did we meet the assignment, but we exceeded the, um, the assignment by completing, uh, three hundred and forty-two units over the, um, the three hundred and ninety-two, so. And not only that, but, uh, we actually completed the assignment in every category. There was a little bit of uncertainty for the above moderate, but, uh, as last year, all the, uh, the units issued in Watson Ranch, we actually completed that as well. Want to go over a little bit about what, uh, how those income, uh, uh, tiers are broken down into. Uh, this is, uh, the information is from the Napa County, uh, Area Median Income. Um, this, uh, index is provided by the state, uh, every year around April. And the, the latest numbers for, um, for Napa County says, eh, for a hundred percent, uh, for a household of four is about a hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh, so this number has been, um, steadily increasing throughout the years. And, uh, the, this is how it breaks down for those four categories. If you're a household of four, uh, very low is considered sixty-three thousand and fifty dollars or less. Uh, medi- uh, medium income, um, is, uh, a hundred thousand and seven hundred and fifty. And then, um, moderate is eighty-one thousand, I mean, a hundred and forty-three thousand and two hundred and eighty dollars. So, um, I think it's almost April of this year, so we'll get the new twenty-twenty-three numbers, uh, soon. So, uh, in regards to affordable housing, um, I want to talk about, a bit about the Nexus Fund, also the number of units we have, and, and, uh, also some of the programs that, uh, we completed for twenty-twenty-two. So first, for the Nexus Fund, uh, we get some affordable housing, uh, uh, fees. Uh, this is from the developers, and we have kind of a, a, um, uh, a number from, for every year. Last year, we collected about eighty-five hundred dollars. But, um, uh, for twenty-twenty-two, we collected a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, for the Affordable Housing Fee Fund. Um, this is mostly due to the new, uh, PG&E, um, Resource Center at five hundred Boone, so it's a pretty big center out there, and they contributed a lot to, uh, to twenty-twenty-two fees. And then, in regards to affordable housing, um, permit activity, we have two, um, projects that I wanted to highlight. Uh, one is the Napa Cove Apartments, which is shown in the upper right. Um, these, these are sixty-six low and very low-income units, uh, which would be dedicated for affordability for the next fifty-five years. And they were issued their building permits, uh, in March of twenty-twenty-two. Um, the second, uh, project would be the Lemos Point Apartments, which received their building permits in twenty-twenty-one, uh, and they are, consist of a hundred and eighty-six units of, uh, low and very low-income units, also for fifty-five years. And, uh, that project started in November of twenty-twenty-one. So, um, I'm sure you, uh, folks have seen the construction going up for, for both projects, and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, to seeing them into their.
Yeah, if I might just comment for a moment, uh, excuse me, the, uh, pictures don't resemble what the buildings are looking like.
Well, right now, it's still kind of, uh, in construction.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, hopefully when the, the, towards the, it's towards the completion, they should.
Thank you.
And then the last part of the housing report is the programmatic efforts. Uh, I want to highlight four, um, items from twenty-twenty-two. First, we have the accessory dwelling units, ADU incentives. The city applied for a permanent local housing allocation program grant, which would provide up to seven hundred and four thousand dollars to assist qualifying homeowners to construct ADUs or, um, uh, second units. Uh, the city's on schedule to also update the ADU ordinance, uh, to complete, comply with state law, in this month, and next, and in the Planning Commission meeting, uh, this week, uh, this coming week, Director Cooper will, uh, will talk about the updates to the ADU ordinance. Uh, and thus, the second item is the Density Bonus Program. Uh, the city received an application for four hundred and fifty-three apartment units, uh, which includes forty-six very low-income units. Uh, this project is proposed north of the, uh, Canyon Ridge Apartments, and the applicant, uh, requested a density bonus, as well as some concessions and waivers. Um, this is through the Senate Bill three-thirty application process, and we are working with them, uh, through their design permit, uh, review at this time. We also, uh, updated our contract with the City of, uh, Napa Housing Authority. The City Council approved a two-year contract with them. We're very happy to have them again to help us administer, um, all their services for, uh, um, uh, housing, uh, in the city. And, uh, for, lastly, the Rental Assistance Program. Those two, uh, affordable housing projects, uh, Napa Cove and Lemos Point, have completed their affordable housing agreements, um, in twenty-twenty-two. I give, uh, as I started talking about them, the Napa Housing Authority, give them a shout-out. They help us, uh, monitor, uh, annual income limits for affordable homes. They also help us with the Section Eight vouchers. Uh, they also do, um, public outreach for affordable housing, and, uh, they, they help administer the Owner Occupied Rehab Program, as well as the First-Time Home Buyers Program for, uh, qualifying applicants. So, that's about it for twenty-twenty-two. I do want to, uh, mention some, uh, housing development for this year, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, I'll go through them in, in entitlements, the building permits, and also those that are in construction. For entitlements processing, uh, we'll see more ADUs come in, uh, for the current year. That, uh, that new project, Residences of Napa Junction, is, is in review right now. Uh, the, we also have a smaller project, the Sun Square Mixed-Use Housing, uh, Project, consists of twenty, um, single-bedroom apartments over about, uh, ten thousand square foot of office. And that's, um, that is tentatively scheduled for April in the, for Planning Commission Review.
Location?
Uh, that's gonna be in the back of Walmart, uh, on Napa Junction Road, so it's a very interesting project. And we also have a new project, the Crawford Multi-Family, uh, um, uh, project, which consists of, uh, about a hundred units at the southwest corner of Crawford and Highway twenty-nine. Um, that just, uh, started their review. We've provided, uh, initial, uh, screen check comments to them, and we're awaiting their second submission. Lastly, we have the Watson Ranch Lot Eight Single Family Homes. That's gonna be twenty-five additional single-family homes north of the Harvest Subdivision. So that's, uh, we're working with, uh, Mr. Terry McGrath on the final steps on that. And, uh, moving on to building permits, those that are, were, are in plan check right now, um, hopefully we'll see them, uh, in construction soon, would be the Old Hill Apartments. Uh, that's in the west side of the, west of City Hall, up on the hill. Uh, they've received their grading permits, but, uh, we're waiting for, um, we're working with them on their building permits, on their next steps. Uh, we also have the Canyon Estates, um, Custom Homes. That's thirty-five homes that's, uh, proposed north of the high school. And the, this project also has their grading, um, I think the grading's completed now. We're waiting on the applicant to submit building permits for their custom homes and get started there. Lastly, we have the residences at the Watson Ranch Hotel. So this project was, um, the entitlement was approved in. So this project was, um, the entitlement was approved in January for a new two-hundred, uh, room hotel and thirty, uh, condo units. So, uh, actually, on the top right is a picture of one of the, of the, uh, the flats that this, uh, project will have. So it's, uh, fifteen buildings, but, uh, thirty units, so, uh, very interesting, uh, project, and they're scheduled to be in the Watson Ranch specific plan. And then, uh-
Isn't there another one over there in the Watson Ranch area that you're expecting soon? Um, that is part of the Noel family?
That's right, that's right. Um, that would be, um, that application, yeah, that was submitted in twenty-twenty-three. That should be in entitlement processing. Um, the, they are calling it Promontory Subdivision, and, uh, that project is, uh, proposed for two hundred and sixteen new single-family homes, of which, up to fifty of them will have, um, ADUs included in them, so, very interesting project. Uh, in construction, uh, would be, uh, Lemos Point Apartments, the Napa Cove Apartments, uh, the ninety-eight units at Watson Ranch Artisan Subdivision, and then the two-hundred units at the Watson Ranch Harvest subdivision. So lots of activity coming in for, um, twenty-twenty-three. Oh, I forgot to mention what those, these photos are. So the one on the top right is the, uh, uh, the, uh, Watson Ranch Hotel Ruins with Residence. The second one is that Crawford Multi-Family Homes. They're about three stories, uh, with garages on the bottom. And then the last one on the lower right is the, uh, artist depiction of the residences at Napa Junction. So, that's pretty much the end of, uh, the report for twenty-twenty-two. I've provided this information to the Planning Commission in February. Um, today's, uh, the presentation for the City Council, and the, uh, report is due to the, uh, to the state prior to April first. So, um, if there's any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you for the presentation. Attended a, uh, uh, two, uh, meetings this, uh, past week that reflect on housing. One was the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities. That's all the electives in Marin, Sonoma, Napa, Salado participate. I think there's over fifty of us online, and it was coffee chat on the housing element. Wow, yeah, a lot of controversy there. Uh, later, it was the Association of Bay Area Governments, Hundred One Cities in all nine counties of the, of the Bay Area. And it got down to, uh, the housing issues also, housing element. Um, seemed to be a bit disconnect. Uh, ABAG offers a lot of, uh, um, research, documentation, assistance with, uh, questions and things like that on it. But I know, don't know that it connects with League of California Cities, so something I have to explore further. Uh, but you know, the challenge for a lot, uh, for both, uh, North Bay Division and from ABAG, you have a small city built out to its borders. What can you do?
Yeah.
No. Uh, it seems, sadly, seems to be a one-size-fits-all type of, uh, edict. And, uh, it certainly is going to, uh, cause a lot of conflict with the enforcement that's, that's following it as well. Uh, we are unique in American Canyon. I understand from, uh, Mr. Hawley, we have one of six cities in the Bay Area that's actually meeting our requirement. We actually exceeded. Uh, well, and my comment at both meetings was, well, uh, I guess we're, uh, unique in one sense here. We have the land to build it on. Uh, but we do need to consider the impact on folks who, uh, don't have it. And, uh, uh, that's just as, uh, as part of the conversation. It was, uh, uh, I think a challenge on it to try and understand how might we resolve this issue with those who can't. Uh, made it. Anyway, what's that? Uh, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, so thank you for the report. Um, just a quick follow-up question on one of the projects. Uh, the four-unit, uh, subdivision, I think at the corner of West Carolyn and Rio del Mar. Um, is it still for sale, or, or do you know what the status is on that one?
Uh, unfortunately, they have not come back since, uh, you know, I think last year, they requested an extension to that. But they, I have not heard if, if they wanted to pursue those four units, or if they wanted to sell it to a different buyer, but right now, yeah, no update for that.
On behalf of Justin Hole, who occasionally asks what's the status, so, and I'm kind of curious too, so, thank you.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. A quick question about the Housing Authority piece. Um, do you know if they're planning on adding any headcount to their staffing to kind of support us? Because it looks like we have a lot of development that, that are occurring here in the city. And, you know, maybe the possibilities of us incorporating our own, uh, Housing Authority to benefit our cities, so that's question one. So, it looks like you're going to be answering that question.
Well, thank you for the question. Actually, I was meeting with the Housing Authority yesterday, um, and they are going to be bringing, uh, presentation to the council in June to give you an annual update on activities in American Canyon. Um, they actually are looking at adding on staff, um, because you're right, there is a lot going on here and elsewhere in Napa County, and so we're really excited about that. Um, the service that the Housing Authority provides is very specialized. Um, very complex with the grants and, um, the, the income monitoring for existing units. Um, there's just a host of, of specialized services they provide. And, um, they provide it not only for the City of Napa, ourselves, uh, as well as the town of Yountville. So they really are able to have enough, uh, resources to be able to serve everybody very well. So it's a great relationship, and, um, we just love the work they do.
Okay. Yeah, I have a little bit of experience working with Housing Authority in the past, and I, and I know the, the importance, and I know those, those specialties that you're talking about. So I just wanted to make sure. I know that it comes with a lot, um, and we're building a lot. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt for us to have the additional people dedicated to American Canyon. I just don't want us to be the afterthought, you know, uh, when it comes to mining the, the barn, if you will.
Yeah, no, I, I don't feel that we're, we're that way at all. Um, they came and, and visited yesterday. We had a great meeting. Um, and, uh, they'll be assisting with implementing our, uh, housing preference policy for, uh, affordable housing projects, um, and so we're working very closely with them, and, and they're very responsive. They're great staff, dedicated.
And I guess my, my other question will be, um, the Crawford Multi-Family, uh, project. I know you said it, but I, I couldn't write quick enough. How many units is that?
There's a hundred units in that project.
Hundred units, okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Council ready for public comment? Public comment on this matter is now open. Anybody from the public wishing to comment?
Yes, good evening. Beth Marcus, I just have a question. Since we've exceeded our percentage for the regional housing, how come we continue to just keep building and building and building? Seems like we're just continually to take on the low-income housing for Napa, um, and we're taking the brunt of all that.
Go ahead.
All right, well, thanks. Um, Beth, thank you. I think a lot of people may have the same question as you. Um, and, um, uh, with respect to building and building, the city has a general plan. Um, and then, along with that, um, there have been many, many years, ten to fifteen years of dialogue with the community on two major projects, um, the Watson Ranch Project, uh, which is one that is, uh, under construction now. And that was arguably fifteen to twenty years in the making. And it's going to bring both housing that's needed, uh, breathing new life into our real estate market, um, providing workforce housing for people who live and work in American Canyon. It's also the engine that brings about some of the, uh, ruins rejuvenation. Um, the hotel, bringing tourism dollars, elevate the city's, um, uh, position within Napa County, um, providing parks, trails, uh, road improvements, um, and there's a host of benefits, um, bringing new people, which then brings then possibility for new businesses that existing residents will enjoy. And the same is true for our Broadway District, uh, along the center part of town. It's, um, altogether, if you look at the park fees, just for example, um, for twelve-hundred units, that's around seven million dollars in park fees to help bring in new facilities for our city. That's just the parks, but there's also road impact fees, um, and then there are also, once again, nude residents that can provide, uh, for businesses. Um, and so there's, it's, it's the engine that helps the city create some of the features and improve our business community, uh, for our community. And it's done in places where it has been discussed that this will be places where new development happens in ways that are appropriate and have been very well talked about for many, many years. So it's a thoughtful plan, and we're just seeing the fruits of it today.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Once again, I'm Jason Kishinef. I represent American Canyon on the Napa College Board, but I will not be speaking for the College or the Board. I will be speaking, however, for the poor. By my calculations, a fifteen-dollar-an-hour job pays about thirty-two thousand dollars a year before taxes, about twenty-six thousand dollars a year after taxes. And while I appreciate low-income housing, you're, when you set the bar at forty-four thousand dollars a year of what low income is, I think you're erasing a whole lot of people, and I don't see any units for very low-income housing. Um, as far as Section Eight goes, I don't know what their status is right now, but a lot of people have a hard time getting on Section Eight. Sometimes their waiting list can be several years long, and sometimes they're closed altogether. And I think, I think that miscategorizing what extremely low housing is is part of what has driven up the cost of housing in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Point of clarification, Mr. Cooper?
Of course. Uh, Mr. Kishinef, great comments. Um, I think what you're referring to is this table that William provided, um, that's the area median income. So, so what, what the incomes that this is referring to, I think that might be, been your comment.
No, he should have grabbed how much has been accomplished for each housing level. And for very, very low income, it had exceeded how it's the level by ninety, so they did.
So, so the, so the, the definition of what is low income, very low, and median, and so on, is based upon a survey of income earners in Napa County. And, and that is how, um, the median is a mathematical calculation, um, and then, and so are, from that are the other categories that go with that. So it, it really is, it's a reflection of income earners in Napa County. Um, it's not, and that's, um, provided to us, um, calculated by the state, uh, for, specifically for Napa County. So it's really kind of, um, uh, a definition that is provided to the city. Um, we can meet offline, Mr. Kishinef. There are, um, among the two large affordable housing projects under construction today. Um, they are limited through their financing mechanism to serve a variety of income types, and some of them are, are very low income, and, um, we can, I can kind of offline share that with you. Um, but there are affordable housing projects of a variety of income that it serves in American Canyon. Um, should I remove this so that we could see our other council member?
Yes.
I can do that.
Sorry, I want to leave.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers on this matter?
I have, uh, wait, I have one, uh, oh, she's disappeared. Oh, we had a hand raised, um, but it, it looks like they changed their mind, so maybe we answered their question. I have no hands raised online. We're good?
Nobody online?
No, no hands raised, no.
Thank you.
Yes, good to see the, uh, presentation, and I think some of the, uh, comments I heard that, uh, I think for point of clarification for me, we're building for American Canyon. It builds our economic base. Here's an example that's known several times. Redwood Credit Union is building a corporate headquarters at the airport. It's not in American Canyon. They are planning on probably at some point having around seven hundred employees. So my question, uh, to Redwood Credit Union, how's an eight-minute commute sound to you? You know, living in American Canyon, working there. Uh, I was at a restaurant probably three or four weeks ago, and the owner comes out, he says, what's all this housing going and building on going on here? He had a bit of a scowl on his face, he says, well, yeah, there's more housing. You're going to have a lot of new customers, brighten up a bit, oh, yeah. See, housing supports economic growth, if it's built right. And that's always been my issue. I'm not against building. Build it right. Build something that is appropriate for the housing needs of a community. We will grow, uh, economically in American Canyon. We have the capacity to do that. We will provide the jobs because we have the capacity to attract the industry to do that. And housing is a critical issue with people looking for employees. Who wants, anybody here want to commute an hour and a half east direction? No. Eight minutes sounds real good. So there we go. Without, say, if your council has any other comments, I will move on to the next item. Okay, so this was a presentation.
Do we need to make a motion to file and receive, or?
I'm looking back for my-
No, this is just receiving my-
Okay.
Receiving and filing.
And requested action is? Motion to receive and file.
Number two. Okay, the next matter is the, uh, continued-
Did we get a motion to receive and file?
No, it's just a receive and file, so we're ready for Giovanoni.
Oh, all right.
Giovanoni.
Okay, let's continue with the next item, please. It's a public hearing, also. Public hearing, by the way, is closed on the Housing Element Progress Report. We're now open the public heari- I have a report on Giovanoni, Giovanoni Logistics Center Warehouse Project.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, uh, Bill Ross, City Attorney, uh, on, uh, your meeting in February, the twenty-first of February, you continued consideration of possible approval of the Giovanoni Warehouse Project after closing the public hearing. The reason for the continuance was to address a comment letter received from the City of Vallejo on February, uh, twenty-first, the same day of the hearing. Uh, that's been accomplished. It's present in the administrative record before you at pages four thousand seven to four thousand ten. Uh, the critical conclusion of that analysis, um, is that water is available. Because of the status of the matter being closed, the public hearing, and I would point out that that's after, uh, the required, uh, public comment period under SEQA and, uh, the previous public hearing, um, uh, the matter is before you for consideration of the recommendation originally made, uh, which would start with consideration of the SEQA, uh, resolution as to possible certification of the FEIR. On that matter, in order to ensure that, uh, there are no other communications like the communication that came from the City of Vallejo that raise issues that have not been addressed previously in the, uh, environmental process, uh, a series of emails mainly focused today and delivered to the city in two sources, both e-source and traditionally direct, directed to the, uh, city clerk have been reviewed. Uh, we do not believe those emails raise any new, different, uh, issues that have not been, um, identified, addressed, assessed, and analyzed in the proposed final environmental impact report before you. Um, accordingly, the staff recommendation would remain the same it is. Um, you know, proposed public comment, uh, would be outside the administrative record uh, because it was not made, uh, during the time period allowed under SEQA, uh, nor the public hearing process. It would be appropriate, if you have questions of the applicant, for the applicant, or the applicant's representatives, or consultants, uh, to respond. applicant's representatives, or consultants, to respond. In short, matters before you for deliberation and decision.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. As Mr. Ross pointed out, we have concluded our requirement on the open process of a public hearing with the input from those who have interests at this point. Do we have any concern or issues to ask questions of applicant representatives or associates of the council? Councilman Joseph.
Well, I don't have any questions relating to the SEQA review. I think there's been a substantial amount of evidence and analysis and responses. But I do have some issues, or at least a request to add an additional condition of approval, as I think we get into item number three, the actual tentative parcel map. And that would relate to essentially tracking vehicle miles traveled, requiring that the developer or the owner of the project give us an annual report on their employees' residence based on zip code. So just as a heads up, that's going to be a request that I make when we get to, I believe, item number three. And just wanted to throw that out there for any reactions by the developer, if that's an issue or not.
Mayor Garcia, Vice Mayor Washington, honorable members of the council, council member Oro online, Joe Leviach with Buzz Oats. In response to the question, it depends. Some tenants, when we, they sign a lease, they say, throw us the keys, we'll call you if we need you. Other tenants are more hands-on. I can't speak to the legality of tracking zip codes, okay, but individual VMT. I mean, we do have a condition now where we are doing trip monitoring for the entirety of the life of the project. So looking at total trips, both AM, PM peak, so we'll have a count of everyone coming in and out. But as far as actual VMT, I can't speak to what we can or cannot provide back to the city in that regard. And I have our SEQA Council, Jim Moose, here who may be able to shed light on that. If it's zip codes of employees, that's one thing.
Right.
But the ability to, certainly without consent, tracking that we can't do, many tenants may have issues with that of literally tracking.
And I appreciate that. And it may be that during the construction phase, we can request it because it's essentially you or your representative. So it's one thing to, perhaps that's what we can track at the construction phase, and perhaps the city can consider through its business licensing process, a means by which to track how many employees and residency there, which is a whole different story and not for you. In terms of compliance with the vehicle miles traveled, the VMT, how were you envisioning verifying that, validating it?
I think we have validated on the truck side, where we use empirical data that was bulk cellphone data that looked at the nine-county A-bag region, picked facilities throughout A-bag, as well as facilities within American Canyon. So we do have empirical evidence on actual truck trips, and that shows to be 40% below regional average. On the auto side, that is an estimate, and it's based on modeling that the technical side is certainly more than my understanding as not a traffic engineer. How we will monitor VMT is really based on the trips in and out, that is a condition of approval now. Again, so I can't speak to what we can do to actually work with our tenants. Again, if it's providing zip codes of employees, that may be one thing. But I think there's going to be some challenges with finding out, you know, 2.1 miles versus 2.6 on this commute. And if I'm leaving work, and I'm going to pick up my kid, and then I'm going to dinner, and then I'm coming home, or going to ball practice, how do you factor that in, right? So I think there may be some challenges on the actual implementation of what that trip length is in totality.
All right. Well, like I said, it may be easier for the city to track it through our licensing, business licensing program.
Sure, that could certainly be a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, shall we proceed with our action? We have three resolutions to address. If council desires to proceed.
If there's no other council comments, I'll start off with the first item. A motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon. One, approving a water supply assessment. Two, certifying the final environmental impact report. SCH Number 2021010104. Three, adopting SEQA findings of fact. Four, adopting a statement of overriding considerations. And five, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Giovanoni Logistics Center project located north of Green Island Road and bisected by Devlin Road. APN 057090008 and 057130034, and yet 057130036. File number PL 20-0042.
All right. I'll second it. Seconded by Vice Mayor Washington. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Moving on to our next resolution.
I'll take the next resolution. I'd like to move Resolution Number 2023, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon approving the Giovanoni Logistics Center Phase One Design Permit to allow up to 1,69,904 square feet of high cube warehouse uses on 70.2 acres located north of Green Island Road and east of Devlin Road. APN 057090008, 057130034, 057130036. File number PL 20-0042.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Washington.
Thank you. Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. The next resolution?
I guess I'll move that one, too. Resolution Number 2023, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon approving the Giovanoni Logistics Center tentative parcel map to create a two-lot subdivision for up to 1, 69,904 square feet of high cube warehouse uses on 70.2 acres located north of Green Island Road and east of Devlin Road. APN 057090008, 057130034, 057130036. And file number PL 20-0043.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Been a long process to get here, and we're glad we have been able to conclude it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Joe Leviach, once again. I just want to thank staff, the council. We have, we've been at this 28 months, and I think 4,500 pages of analysis. Obviously, a lot goes into it. Our consultant team, thank you, guys. We look forward to really creating a catalyst project for the city. We know this is the largest undeveloped piece left in the city, and we look forward to 50, what, 100-year ground lease in the City of American Canyon. So thanks again, and really looking forward to it. And I'd be remiss, my four-year-old daughter, she was throwing up last night. I think she's trying to watch, so I love you, Flora. Thank you again.
Okay. Well, thank you all the work, for all, everybody who participated in this. It certainly is a long process, but it takes time and patience. And we conclude it. We'll give it a few minutes here for chambers exit. We have the annual comprehensive financial report.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Juan Gomez, Finance Director. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the 2021, fiscal year 21, annual comprehensive financial report for the city and for the American Canyon Fire Protection District. Before I begin, I just want to quickly thank finance staff for contributing to this document. It's a 144-page document. It's not a light read, but the hard work that they put into it. The finance department was short-staffed. I came onboard. They were really working hard to complete this with the help of our auditors. They put it through the finish line, and I'm pleased to say we had a good audit here. Also, want to mention that our auditor, Brian Nash, partner with Richardson and Company, is on Zoom, in case you guys have any questions for him. He is available via Zoom for you. And I also want to thank Richardson and Company for providing their guidance and support in completing this audit with a lot of GASB implementations. We implemented two pronouncements this year, GASB 87, which requires us to record operating leases as right-to-use assets and liabilities. We also implemented GASB 97, which requires us to disclose deferred comp plans and deferred comp contribution plans for the city. A lot of the times with these GASB pronouncements, it takes a lot of research and legwork, causes a staff to really look at these new pronouncements. GASB 87 leases in particular was very daunting. We have to look at every lease we have, whether we're a lessor or a leasing, and essentially record them on our books. So I want to thank the auditor and our staff for helping us through this. So as we look at some of the highlights here for the act for, first of all, I want to start out with, we do receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GFOA. There's been several years now that we've received this award. It's just an award that really streamlines the financial reporting, easy to read, comprehensive. All the information that is required by those standards is included in our document, and then we apply for that award, and we receive it. Now, again, the act for document is a huge document. It can be very daunting for the average person to read. It is broken down into four sections. It's the introductory section, the financial section, supplemental section, and the statistical sections. A lot of these sections have good information. William from our Community Development Department was mentioning all the projects that are online right now that are currently undergoing. The first introductory section has all that in depth on what's happening with the city. It gives you an overview of the city, what's happening, what we're achieving, what our financial forecasts are, what we're expecting in terms of the general economy and so forth. The financial section in particular includes the independent auditor's report, management discussion and analysis, that is, management's interpretation of the numbers, so to speak, in the kind of summary form, without getting into all the documents. We also have the financial statements, the notes, which are very important and accompany the financial statements. And then we also have the required supplemental information. Now, going back to the auditor opinion, the auditor's opinion was that the statements are presented fairly in all material respects, in accordance with accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States of America. In other words, this is a unmodified or clean opinion. This is the highest opinion we can get in terms of our financial documents. There are no material misstatements that the auditor found, and therefore, every stakeholder can rely, whether it's bondholders, whether it's the public, whether it's our grantors or anything like that, they can rely on these statements as clean. Couple of things that the auditors provided us was a management letter and a governance letter. The management letter explains the auditor's engagement in terms of the audit. If they're finding any deficiencies in terms of internal controls, there are two types of deficiencies. There's a material deficiency, and then there is a significant deficiency. The auditor found no material deficiencies, and if there were a material deficiency, that would mean that the statements have a possibility of a misstatement in them. They do not. We did, unfortunately, did have a few significant deficiencies in the audit. One of them was closing entries due to our shortage in staff. It took a while for us to complete the financials and provide the auditor with the required documentation. In particular, after we had provided the trial balance, there were 34 entries that needed to be recorded. It may, 34 may seem a lot, but it's not. We have hundreds and hundreds of entries when it comes to the financials here, but there were 34 entries that we worked with the auditor in order to complete the act for on time. Secondly, we had the capital assets. There were a number of projects that we continue to have construction in progress, and there hasn't been any activity for a while. So I am working with staff to figure out whether these projects can be moved over into an asset, or we can just expense them out. So we have some construction in progress that needs to be figured out, and we're looking into that right now. Secondly, or thirdly, there was a pension and OPEB plans. Reporting, we had some minor differences in our plans from what the city prepared to what the auditor prepared. It was a slight difference in terms of the calculations that we have. The auditor has provided us with a CalPERS tools. That way, we can use that CalPERS tool, the same tools that they use in terms, in order to get to the same number. And finally, there was a cash reconciliation deficiency. Our auditors recommend that we prepare a cash reconciliation and investments for each fund. We currently pool our cash and investments. It's the easiest way to get, to manage the investments and the cash in our bank. They want us to do it by fund on a yearly basis. Essentially, we're looking into doing that reconciliation, but we have software limitations in terms of being able to do that on a, by fund basis. So, for example, we pool our money, we send it to LEAF, we get our investments. They actually want to know what portion of that LEAF money belongs to each fund. We have a cash balance, but it's just a little bit more work, and we'll work with them in order to work that out. And finally, the governance letters is just a letter from the auditor that states their responsibility on the audit, scope, and timing, if there were any difficulties encountered in the audit, or if there were any disagreements with management. I'm happy to report that there were no disagreements or issues or difficulties that were encountered by the auditors on this audit. So going into the numbers here, our citywide net position increased by $4.8 million. Our net position is essentially our assets and deferred outflows minus our liabilities and deferred inflows. Essentially, that is really what our worth is, our net position. $4.8 million of that, the entire increase was due to governmental activities, business-type activities. Our net position is essentially our, our assets and deferred outflows minus our liabilities and deferred, deferred inflows. Essentially, that is really what, what our worth is, our net position. Four-point-eight million dollar of that, the entire increase was due to governmental activities. Business-type activities remained unchanged. As we look here, citywide assets and deferred outflows increased to 374.6 million. Three-hundred-and-three million is related to governmental activities, and seventy-one million is related to those business-type activities. Business-type activities being water, sewer, recycled water funds. Eighteen-point-six million of that is unrestricted net position. That means we have the ability to use that money as we see fit for operations. It's not restricted to any, any third party or not assigned to any, any other purpose. This is just another depiction of our net position here. You can see here, we have our, our government activities from twenty-one to twenty-two and our business-type activities, twenty-one compared to twenty-two. Down at the bottom, bottom right here, you can see three-hundred-and-sixty-nine million. Three-hundred-and-sixty-nine million was our net position last year. Three-hundred-and-seventy-four million is our net position this year. That includes all our capital assets, net of depreciation. Now, as we look at our 2021 audited actuals, we can see our revenues for the general fund on that top line. We had twenty-point-three million dollars in revenues, twenty-two-point-two million dollars in expenditures. We also had two-point-three million dollars in other financing sources. That two-point-three million dollars is, is a transfer from other funds for support services, for administrative support service, what we call a cost allocation for support services for finance, HR, et cetera. So, the, the general fund at the end of the year had a, a net income of $381,000. As we look at the special revenue funds, special revenue funds are those, for example, they're gas tax, lighting, landscape districts. They're, they're specific to a, they're restricted to a specific purpose, so the revenue received can only be used for a specific purpose. Those funds had fourteen-point-two million dollars in revenues, seven-point-seven million in expenditures, other financing sources, four-point-nine million dollars in uses. That essentially is the ARPA money that came into a special revenue fund. We then moved it out to a capital improvement funds in order to work on our capital improvement projects. Those, those funds had a net income of 1.5 million dollars. And then we look at our capital improvement funds, 2.2 million dollars. Expenditures of 7.3 million dollars. Essentially, it had a net loss on paper of 417,000. Essentially, capital project funds are just money coming in from the sources, whether it's gas tax, whether it's developer impact fees, AB-1600 fees, and then that moves out to the projects. In this case, in this past year, our Public Works Department has been very busy. So, they, they, they pumped out 7.3 million dollars in projects. So, that's kind of why it looks like it's, there's a deficiency, but it's not. We just, we just had that money built up in order to get, put that money to work. And that, the Public Works team has done a good job of pumping those out. Debt service funds, debt service funds are really supposed to just be break-even money coming in. Should be the money going out to pay the, the, the principal and interest. And then we look at our proprietary funds. Those are our, our one is going to be our enterprise funds, which is our business activities. Those comprise, again, of water, sewer, and wastewater. Those had a, a net loss of $37,000. Slight loss, usually those should be break-even. The reason they had a slight loss, again, as I mentioned in our last meeting with the mid, mid-cycle, oh, sorry, the mid-year of, of twenty-three, is that we had, we had unrealized paper losses on our investments. And we have to mark-to-market and, and require to, to take those as a loss. If the value of our investments isn't worth, the market value isn't worth what we paid them, then we have to take that, that loss. So, without that loss, the enterprise funds actually had a $629,000 operating income. As we look at our internal service funds, those are, those are our funds for IT, legal, fleet, and building maintenance. Those funds had a net income of $377,000. So, citywide total, we had $53 million in revenues, $53 million sort of in, in expenditures, had 1.6 million dollars in financing sources. So, we had overall a, a income of 1.8 or 1.9 million dollars. Kind of looking at our balance sheet here, and I know this is a lot of numbers, but that's what the financials in act for is, is a lot of numbers. Our balance sheet here is our, our assets and deferred outflows. That's, that's all the assets that we have, including all our capital assets, our cash in the bank, our investments and so forth, and then our liabilities. At the end of, end of last year, on June thirtieth, 20, 2022, we had a net position of 114.6 million dollars. Kind of looking at it another way in terms of the, the income that I showed two slides prior, we have our beginning fund balances here. We had a beginning fund balance in governmental funds of 40.7 million dollars. We had net income in those funds of 1.5. So, our ending fund balance in the governmental funds was 42.2 million dollars. Proprietary funds, again, enterprise and internal service funds, we had a beginning net balance of 71.9 million dollars. Had some income there and a net ending fund balance of 70, 72.3 million dollars. So, again, we get back to that 114 million dollar ending fund balance. So, real quick, as I look back at that governmental funds here, at that forty-two, forty-two-point-seven million dollar ending fund balance, I got that here, forty-two, forty-two-point-three million dollars, an increase of 1.5. We have non-spendable, non-spendable fund balance of $400,000. That's a, a balance that's not available to spend. That is actually a property we own on Teresa, on Teresa Lane. So, that, that is a part of our fund balance. Restricted, restricted is, has external enforceable limitations. For example, gas tax, storm drain, Measure A, those, those funds can only be used for a certain purpose, hence they're restricted. Committed, we have 8.3 million dollars. Those are self-imposed fund balances. Those are mainly the general fund contingency, the economic development reserve of 1, 1 million dollars. So, those are committed by the council and can, can be moved around only by council action. We have assigned, assigned of 5.2 million dollars. And then we have unassigned of 2.3 million dollars in, in the fund balances. Now, getting into the general fund, if we look into the general fund, like I mentioned earlier, the, the general fund had a net income of $382,000. General fund revenues increased $2 million. $2 million to 22.7 million dollars. That was made up of several, several high-level, I just put in the, the, the higher-level ones that made up that $2 million. Really, we had property tax increase of 845,000. Sales tax increased 247,000. Transit occupancy tax, 758,000 dollars. Other taxes and license include business license charges, franchise fees, cardroom tax that increased 421,000. Again, that investment earnings there shows up as a negative. When we mark-to-market those investments, we had a paper loss of 847,000. And then charges for service was 493,000 dollars. Of that, 143 dollars was an increase in recreation charges and 300,000 in developer contributions. As a reminder, the, the general fund is comprised of both the general fund and the, the development contribution fund, Fund 105 and Fund 100. General fund expenditures increased 2.9 million dollars to 22.3 million. Salaries and benefits increased 982,000. Last year, last year, we did have furloughs that we had implemented for employees. Those, those kind of, we eliminated. We had some vacancies that we filled during the year. So, we had an increase in, in salary and benefits of 982,000. Supplies and services increased 952,000. Our sheriff contract increased 448,000. Capital outlay, 187,000. Utilities and maintenance, 169. So, at the end of the year, we had a net income of 382,000 in, in the general fund. So, as we look at the fund balances here, how we end it, real quick, I mentioned our capital projects, fund, general fund contingency, unassigned and all other. We went from 12.2 million. We add that net income of 381,000. Our fund balance is 12.5 million dollars. Now, the general fund contingency at the end of this year was 5 million dollars. It's 22.4% of general fund expenditures. Our target, again, per our policy is 25%. No increase in the economic development reserve, currently at the 1 million dollar target. This, of course, is fiscal year 22, looking back at June thirtieth, 22. So, we still had that capital projects reserve at 2 million dollars as of June thirtieth. Now, I included this slide because I had, I had shown counsel this at our, at our mid-year budget. And typically, we present the act for before we do the, the mid-year budget. But we kind of did it reverse, just, just the way the timing was and how our audit just took a little longer. But I just wanted to show that unaudited there was 12.586 for fiscal year 22 fund balance. If I go back one slide, we had 12.586555. Here, we have 12586557. So, we're, we're off $2, but we did, we did some good estimating there. No, no additional changes there. So, as we look here, just looking forward, this is not part of the act for, but this is our estimated fund balance here. If we look at the far-right column, we are expecting a greater increase in, in terms of net income for fiscal year 23. We, I had spoken about the, the sales tax increasing, the, the one-time sales tax money that we received. So, we're looking at a fund balance here at the end of fiscal year 23 of 14.9 million dollars. Going back to the enterprise fund here, I wanted to touch on these real quick. Our water utility had revenue of, of 10 million and expenses of 10.2. We do have a net position in the water fund of 40 million dollars. Now, the majority of that, of course, is capital assets, our infrastructure, our water treatment plan, pipes in the ground, et cetera. Wastewater utility had revenue of 5.6 million dollars, expenditures of 5.7 million dollars, net position of 31.5 million. Recycled water utility had revenue of half a million dollars and expenditures of 3 million dollars. Again, it's a, it's a young fund. We are, with all of these funds, we are looking at a, a, a water rate study. We're currently undergoing that and looking at how we can further sustain these, these funds. Again, should be self-sustaining. All the revenues from charges for services that come in should be sufficient enough to, to cover all the expenses. And as we look at the sources of revenue citywide here, 52.1 million dollars was a decrease of 3.3 million dollars. Really, the majority of that is attributed to the ARPA money. The ARPA money we received in, in fiscal year 21 was 4.9 million. Certainly, we didn't receive that money in fiscal year 22, hence we see a decrease of 3.3 million dollars. But it was slightly offset by that increase in property tax and that increase in sales tax. You can see that property tax accounts for 33% of our revenues. Now, when you look at this, this is, again, just a reminder, this is both the City of American Canyon and the American Canyon Fire Protection District. So, we receive approximately 12, the city receives approximately 12.1 million in property tax, and the fire district receives approximately 5 million dollars in property tax. Sales tax accounts for about 10%. Franchise tax, 2%. Charges for service mainly attributed to the enterprise funds, 37%. Grants and contributions, 15%.
Excuse me, franchise tax is what?
Franchise tax fees is the fees that we charge for PG&E Comcast, our ecology contract.
Thank you.
Yep. And kind of just a, a table depiction of what we just saw here of the, of the, the chart. We look at the, the last, last, the total columns, 21 to 22. We went from 55.5 million dollars to 52.1 million dollars. We can see kind of all the, all the, the revenues on a table instead of a chart there. And as I look at the expenses here, expenses for the city were 47.3 million dollars, an increase of 2 point, 2.0 million dollars, an increase of 1 million dollars in public safety, half a million dollars for community development, 1.5 million in the water enterprise fund, and a, a savings in the sewer enterprise fund over last year. And again, this is just a depiction of that chart in a, in a graph form. We went from 45.2 million to 47.3 million dollars. And finally, just, this is our, our capital assets by classification. This just shows everything that we own in terms of capital assets, our land, construction in progress, right-of-ways, building and equipments. This is all net of depreciation. In fiscal year 21, we had, again, on that bottom, bottom row, we had 327.9 million dollars in capital assets. We had a slight decrease to 326 million dollars. Again, as those assets depreciate, the value of those assets goes down. So, we have some, had some depreciation in those, those assets. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks for the report. Good to know we're a good financial position.
We are.
And again, thank you for the quality of the work being done. Those reports certainly point to good stewardship of our finances. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, I would agree. Thank you for the report. It was clear and understandable to me, at least. I don't know about anybody else. But a couple of questions. I was going to ask about the paper loss on interest earnings, and you highlighted it for the business fund in a way. So, I think it's important to really emphasize that that is a paper loss. It, it isn't going to happen because we don't sell our bonds early. We're not Silicon Valley Bank. We didn't have a liquidity issue or any of that. Do you have any sense of what our earnings, our interest earnings would have been if you could have just ignored that one transaction?
I think it was roughly 1.8 million dollars.
Okay.
Was the, was the, the GASB 31 fair market value adjustment.
Okay. So, we're, you know, interest rates are going up. We are starting to make more money in that category versus kind of like nothing a few years ago. The other quick question is on the Certificate of Excellence. Because we did get a little later than normal, are we still eligible to get the certification, assuming everything is done correctly?
Yep. We, we asked for an extension and we, we were approved for an extension. So, I think we have until March 31st to turn in the document.
Excellent.
Yep.
And then the last one on some of the, what is it? The significant discrepancies. Most of those struck me as the kinds of things that you showed up kind of late in the year and you're in catch-up mode. They'd be more concerning if they said that next year versus this year. So, I think you're entitled to a pass in general. The one area, and it, it just relates to a concern I have, is the construction in progress. They certainly could be projects that, you know, were given up and nobody ever paid attention to them. Or they could be projects that are still valid and there just hasn't been any activity. That is a bigger concern for me because I've been concerned about managing projects in general for a long time. And what caught my eye is whether or not this is a financial way of saying, are we managing our projects? So, I'm, I'm very concerned about what you discover as you go through and find out whether they're, you know, projects that just need to be capitalized or if they're projects that went away and these need to be expenses. So, I'd be interested in hearing what the outcome is.
Me and my staff are going to go through, through the, the exercise of looking at those projects and seeing what has construction in progress outstanding. And once we complete that analysis, we'll report back. I can report back on a, on a departmental update to counsel.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Good report, good numbers and a, and a good report. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Counsel ready for public comment? Public comment on this matter is open. Anything from the public? Anything online?
No, there is nothing online.
Very good. Well, we'll close the public comment on this matter and continue. This is, uh... Receive and file, yes. And next up is Management Staff Oral Reports. Maintenance and Utilities Department Sewer Wastewater Division update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Felix. And I see Pam is waiting patiently here. They have a presentation for us, so maybe it's just going to be Felix on our wastewater.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance and Utilities Director. Good evening, staff and the public. And thanks, Pam. Pam showed up. She's moral support tonight. Thank you for that. All right, let's find this thing here. We have some videos embedded in here. Hopefully, they work out all right. So, tonight, update on the Water Treatment and Sewer Collections Division. Quick overview, this is obviously only the WRF. Just gives a overview of what the different facilities are. Quick labels. Later on in the presentation, we'll show you the collection system. Later on in the presentation, we'll show you the collection system.
What's Blue Frog?
Blue Frog? The Blue Frog is, it's, would be like a passive, it's a, it's like a passive aerobic digestion. So currently, when, when the solids are, are wasted off the membranes, so we have to get rid of the solids, they go into that pond, there's some passive aeration in there, and it helps to break down those solids.
Remember a presentation on it some time ago. Yeah.
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 It was a, that was a performance contract, and they met the performance. They, they met their, their targets, and so we paid them the rest of the money, and we still use them today.
All right.
An interesting photo of staff. Got a little stretched out. We have Ray, Ray there, Nolan and Josh, and then Mark Wrinkle is our plant mechanic. The treatment facility, I'm not going to go through the entire thing. I'm sure you guys are well aware of what we have there, but what I will touch is some of these highlights is, for this facility, the water reclamation facility is, the average weather flow, dry weather flow there is 2.5 million gallons per day. Peak wet weather capacity is 5.0 million gallons per day. And just a little perspective going in the next slide is that from April of 2018 to March of 2021, the average daily inflow was about 1.5 MGD. This is where, where it really gets interesting. This is from December, late December through January. Maybe, oh, good, easy to see. During that, that really heavy rain event that we had, we had the total inflow from that timeframe, from December 26th to January 30th, was a total of 1.4 million gallons. The treated flow is 1.8 million gallons. Those two numbers don't match because we do have emergency overflow. So all the flow that comes in, not all goes through the plant, some of it does go to the emergency overflow pond, and then from there, we'll bring it back in later. In that timeframe, we had 14.5 inches of rain.
Wow.
The average daily flow, just for perspective, is about, at that time was about, before the rain, about 1.4 million gallons. And then for the month, it's about 44 million gallons. So in this month, we did 104 million gallons, a little over a month.
If I can jump in a quick question, if we can go back.
Absolutely.
So you can, you know, our, our maximum capacity is 5 million, and, and you can see there were three episodes where we exceeded it.
Absolutely.
So that's when, or I guess the question is, so what happened on those three events?
We utilize, we do utilize our emergency overflow ponds, but in, but there is a, an instance when we have these, these very severe events like this where we can bypass. And when we bypass, it's partially treated waste that goes to an over, to a outfall. And part of that process is, there is a procedure that the operators follow, so we have a standard procedure that they follow. And then there's a notifying period as well with the state. So we notify the state, they, they say okay. And then the follow-up to that is, is a report on everything that happened, all the rain, every, everything that we did. We also include in that report as the standard operating procedure. You know, that's what happens in that instance. And, and really, we say, operations did a fantastic job. We, the City of American Canyon fared much better than other, other municipalities. I believe we had, I think we had maybe one SSO in that timeframe, so an overflow in the collection system, where other folks had multiples and multiple bypass events at other facilities as well. So again, a lot going on here. It's really not going to mean much to you if you don't normally look at this kind of stuff. What this, to break down what it tells, what this telling the operators, is we have what's called the insight program. It, it's a, it's a software that comes with the membrane system. And what that does is it continuously monitors the performance of the membranes. So we can, we can know when we need to backwash or backpulse, what the condition of those membranes are, what their permeability is, what type of pressures are they experiencing. So again, it's software that puts this data, operators are able to look at this, and they'll help them, it helps them to operate that plant, especially when we have really high-flow events like we did in that January. Yes?
Just a real question. I mean, the first thing that jumps out to me when I see this, I'm a graph kind of guy, matrix kind of guy, is that red? So I mean, high level, can you kind of give me an idea of what that?
Yeah, when we're looking at, when we see, I mean, in, in the, it's split between the trains, the flow is not always equal. So one train may be, may get more solids or more loading than the others. So the membrane, these, this inside system, it monitors every single bank individually. So then the operators can know, and you see there's, there's, I don't know if it's the four different graphs with the four different membranes, but it gives them that information, hey, we need to backpulse more often, decrease the flow rate. And they, and they can, they can make those adjustments on the influence side of those membranes. There are weirs that they can adjust, and so they can adjust flow rates. And for instance, if you have, let's say you have membranes that are newer, if you replace those membranes that are a little newer, you might want to load those a little harder than some older membranes, which you can, on the next slide, kind of...
Is that the UF reflects the membranes?
Excuse me?
The UF, previous slide.
Oh, yeah.
You call that, there's a red, what I think Vice Mayor's referring to, is that the graph? The notation, either is UF 1, 2, 3, 4.
It's really small here, so I got...
UF 3 it says, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what is, what does the UF represent?
Oh, those, fairly certain, those are the four, the four different trains.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Frankly, manager Chi Atkinson is going to give this presentation tonight, but he's, he's out of town.
Okay.
He's going to have another grandbaby, so...
Basically, we have, you can see the performance on four different trains.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you.
Here's an example of the membranes, eight to 12 years old. They were placed in 2015. The reason that we have these eight-year-old membranes that look a lot better is because there was some improved screening that was done at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. The insight, combined with the insight software, and then taking that information and just maintaining those membranes better. And really, the influence screening was a huge help. It's, for membrane plants, screening is the big thing. It's interesting enough, I think I might have mentioned this before, dental floss, dental floss and hair. And those are the two things. Don't flush dental floss, because it goes, and if you see this one, this eight to 12, it gets stuck in these membranes, and we got to pick that stuff out, right? I don't, but stuff does.
I feel like we should give community members tours regularly of the wastewater treatment plant, because after I took my tour, there were things that I stopped putting down the tour after, for sure.
We'll be happy to do that, absolutely. We can work with, with Jen.
She's the department of residency.
Right. And, and then you could see this first, yeah. Now, some people don't like to see it, but... Some recent things that were accomplished, as we've stated before, the MPDS permit renewal, that was in collaboration with Environmental Services Division, stress testing and local limits assessment, again, with the Environmental Service Division, and then the Napa Logistics Pump Station, which was in, in coordination with Pella Works. Sewer collections, sewer collection staff, Jordan Slava has since moved on, but that's a picture of him when he was with us. The sanitary sewer management plan, recently updated. It is a requirement to the State of California. Any public-owned system has to have this in place. It kind of spells out the different things that we do for mitigation if we have a sanitary sewer overflow, or how we maintain the system. So again, recently updated. The different responsibilities, we do have 54 miles of sewer collection pipe, five pump stations, and this division will go out, they inspect, repair, the CCTV, SSO spill responses, and then they also support the wastewater treatment plant operators, as well as other divisions throughout the city. This is a quick, quick diagram. There's some new equipment that we purchased recently. If you recall, we did purchase a new camera system, and we did get the new Vector. The new camera that we have does have this lateral launch capability, and what that, what that means is where the home, the pipe from the home connects to the sewer main, we're able to have the camera go in there, and we can send the camera, it can, it can launch into there, and we can inspect part of that as well. Smaller, it's a smaller piece of equipment. More equipment that we use to maintain the system. And this is a result of upgrading the equipment, where the new unit, we have 2,400 gallons debris tank in the new Vector, where before it was 850. We can, we can clean and jet longer distances with that unit. The rapid development boom, it just speeds up the process when we're operating that vacuum portion of the, of the equipment as well. And then 80 gallon per minute of flow compared to the older unit that had a 50 gallon per Quick picture of the, some of the new equipment. We have a video, hopefully this plays. Water will pull that, that, that line through. Is it, the jets go, go backwards? High pressure pulls it through. Once it gets through, then they pull it back, and all that high-pressure water will pull all the debris and scale and stuff off, and they'll pull it into the, into that inlet. From there, they'll use the vac portion to back out, out any debris. I'm also like, like to point out that the new unit, other advantages is, with those larger tanks, we have less trips back and forth. We can hold more stuff, we can be out there longer, do those longer runs. It's just a lot more efficient for stuff. This is the Q's FlexiTrack, the, the new camera that was purchased. Some information about this, these wheels are adjustable. We can, we can change these wheels, different sizes depending on what we're, what we're inspecting. The camera has pan and tilt as well. Caught up here. Jen always says, you need to get better notes. I like my notes. I like the way they are. We're able to do pressure mains as well. We can, we can use this in multiple scenarios. It does save time and money for staff in the older unit, not, not as flexible, didn't have the lateral launch, just a lot older unit that was, frankly, was constantly breaking. These are, these are some stills of the sewer collection system. And what staff will do is they, they have a, a rating system, so they will go in, it's a standard system, and then they inspect. We can see that here, we, we might have some offsets, some leakage. They will note where it's at, which, which, what the upstream, downstream manhole is, the address. Over here's more stuff, some, some, some surface, you know, flaking off, if you will, and then just more intrusion, things that we're able to locate. And you can kind of see here, the difference when you see older pipe, this is some newer, newer section. So we can classify those, those pieces, which I'll show later on in, in other slides. Mystery solved. So we have a blockage in the, in the collection system. Staff will go out, they'll, they may try to jet it first, which is typically, is the first course of action, so your, your crawler can get through, they're not going to hit any obstructions. In this particular case, they ended up sending the crawler in there. Mystery solved. They know what's going on. We have root balls, they come in through these offsets or these cracks. Roots love sewer systems. Anybody that has ever had septic would know that that's the same case with that as well. So mystery solved, and then we're able to get in there, we have the capability of cutting these roots. The, the new unit, the Vector, has those, the tools on there, so we could send other things, not just the hydrojet, but we can send tools in there that can cut this stuff up. And then we'll pull it back and back it up.
When you said we sent a crawler in there, you didn't mean a human?
It's the, it's the, the slide I showed before, it looks like a little remote control thing. So we have, what happens is, no, they're, they're, they're plenty safe. They also have a, as part of that, there's a trailer, it's like a, you look like a you-all trailer, just not painted the same color, obviously. But they're in there, it's like a remote control, so they can see it on the screen, they can advance, pull it back, and then they can stop it, pan tilt, make different notes of, of the pipe, if it's at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 6 o'clock, so on and so forth. In this particular case, this is, doesn't look like much, but when we inspected this portion, it was part of CIP SS4, and we went in there, and we were able to verify and confirm, yeah, we need to replace this particular section. I think this might be, is this a video? It is. So what we're seeing here is this is badly deteriorated pipe here. Exposed joints, some missing bottoms. Here, we're able to, to look around.
So the real question is, how long does it take to replace that now, now that it's been discovered?
That's an Erica question. I believe we have several sections, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a more appropriate answer. What we did was, is part of these inspections, we worked with Pella Works and with Director Smithies. We gave her our top list, so we said, she asked us, hey, where your, your high priority areas? We gave her that list, and that gets put into the CIP. It's also, it's, a portion of it is in the Rancho area. So it's, it's on the, on the board for replacement. Replacement and then pave, right? That's an important piece. So this is a rather lengthy video, but what, what it gets into is really, it just takes the assessment of that pipe, which typically, if you, this particular section, you wouldn't know there was something wrong. When you're above ground and, and you're just, people just go about their business, they wouldn't know that anything's wrong with that pipe. But by doing these regular routine maintenance and inspections, we're able to classify these and give them, give them a, give them a ranking of 1 through 5.
And then Felix, just going from that, I mean, again, as we replace some of these sewer lines that are, that allow all that water to come in, the, the, down the road, the advantage hopefully is that there will be less inflow and infiltration, so that at the wastewater plant, those 5 million gallon spikes during heavy rains should be less because, you know, there, there isn't all that stormwater flowing through all the cracks and all that.
Absolutely.
So there's, there's supposed to be, the ultimate payoff is, it will then reduce some of those peak stresses on the plant itself.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Joseph. A very good point that I feel to, to mention is that is a very, very important thing, right? Reducing the INI, whether it's a full replacement, or we slip line, cured and placed pipe, and certain sections where they may still be structurally sound, but have some, some joints that are offset or, or something along those lines, where we can just cure it and place pipe. It's a cost savings as well when we can do that, in addition to what you mentioned with the INI coming to the plant. We don't want to be treating water. It's, you know, it's more expensive to just pump and, and then chemicals, and then we have these big rain events where we have lots of problems. So maps of the collection system. On the left, we have the different types of pipe material that we've identified within the system. The clay pipe is red, so that clay pipe is, is very old, very brittle, probably the oldest in the city, I would say. And then, in the orange, we have asbestos cement pipe, and in green is where we have PVC pipe. It's a lot better material. And then on the right, what we're showing here is which areas of the city are serviced by which pump station. So the yellow is served by Green Island Pump Station, green is served by the Sunset Pump Station, and the red is served by Building E over on Wetlands.
See, asbestos pipe has so much of a breakage problem as the clay?
Clay is problematic for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the question is, did...
Well, what do we, I was just wondering, what do we do with the asbestos pipe?
Oh, asbestos pipe...
Asbestos being an issue.
It's, it's only an issue in certain situations. It does last fairly long, more, you're going to have more type of things like offsets. You might have some, some crown rot, depending on what type of, what type of situation. With the more technical answer here, but what happens is you get this hydrogen sulfide gas, when you, in certain instances, you can get gas in there, and that will corrode the asbestos pipe, so you get what's called crown rot. So the top, the top of the pipe will start to soften, and then it'll eventually, it will collapse. Typically, you'll find out, if you don't regularly inspect, you'll find out because you'll have a blockage, you'll have a sewer overflow.
Yeah.
And then once you do start jetting, you'll see a lot of gravel, and then you know it's a bad day, right?
I was just thinking, the, yeah, I was talking with Mr. Hall earlier about this, with the replacement of the clay pipe. You know, if we surface street, probably good for maybe 20 years, maybe, if you understand. So if we replace the pipe, then you pave the street, good approach. So if we replace the pipe, then you pave the street, good approach. If it, it's gonna take longer than 20 years to replace pipes in some areas, say Rancho, then why don't we just go ahead and pave the street and 20 years down the road, replace the pipe?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm actually gonna see if Erica wants to come up and, and talk a little about the ARPA-funded project over in Rancho. The council has appropriated some, some ARPA funding for a project over in Rancho, and she might be able to give a little bit of an update on, on where that is.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, community members. Erica Smithies, Public Works Director. The Rancho Del Mar project, as approved, was a section of Rio Del Mar, reconstructing a section of Rio Del Mar from Highway 29 to West Carolyn, and then a lot of the sub streets, like Delray Court, Alta Loma, Los Altos Drive, Flamingo Court,
Okay.
A section of Joan Drive, all in this kind of little area, because we only had 4.9 million to spread around to various parts of the city. That includes the, the sewer upgrades that were recommended in the 2006 master plan, and the water replacement along those streets, the upgrades. The RFP has not gone out, it's sitting on my desk, I need to finalize it and get it out. We're gonna use our on-call engineers, there's five of them currently listed, to bring that back here, hopefully by the end of next month for award, or the first part of May for a design award, and then get it out. That includes the Knightsbridge project as well on that list, the RFP that's going out, which is a water replacement project. So we, going in, I think I was trying to over, oversell that we could get done sooner, and one of the council members, I think, said, please, you know, there's a lot on the plate, so it'd probably take a little longer. So we got the short-term ARPA projects completed last year, as you're aware, you know, the safe streets improvements. But these larger, longer foreseen projects will take a little bit of time to design and then get constructed. Construction will be the easy part, it's, it's always the design work up front, so.
Quick question then, looking at the clay pipe situation, which is mostly in the Rancho area, are we looking to replace a lot of that with the ARPA funding, or, or with that project?
It was a mix of enterprise funds and ARPA funds. We couldn't do it all just in the ARPA, because it was only 4.9 million, we shaved a half a million dollars off. And the, so that was 4.3 million or 4.0, that was, that was put towards these projects. And then we did a combination of enterprise funds and Measure T funds for reconstruction.
Well, the question is, how many of the clay, how much of the clay pipe do we think we can replace combining all those funding sources in that one project, or?
I'd have to get back to you on that. It was, it was all spelled out in the, the, the schedule that was submitted to council on March 5th of 2022.
It just seems like another good opportunity to replace a lot of old pipe, which in turn, you know, is back to that, you know, sealing up the, the line, so we have less inflow, but, okay. Looking forward to it. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Erica. I know I put, I put you on the spot.
Thank you, Erica. The next slide is.
I'm trying to work with replacing all sewer lines, clay sewer lines and paving streets, because as we all know, some of them are pretty bad shape. The fact that we can do a lot of that together, then that's a good thing.
So, yeah, like I said, good segue into this, this slide here. This is where we have the, we, we, we just went with a simple rating system for this presentation. You can see green, good, good, but older, moderate, and bad, and really, the correlation is, is there from the previous slide. We'll point out that typical ratings and the, the way that the staff do rate them for their, for CIP-type stuff is a one through five, they use a NASCO rating, and then we give that information to Eric. Another benefit of the, the system that we have is we get the data to engineering, but also we have GIS capability, so we can go through there, get several points if we know exactly. Maybe there might be just a one bad section that was installed poorly, or an offset or something. So we can pinpoint that, and then we can do what's called a point repair, so we're just going in, repairing that one particular section. So anyhow, that's, and the other advantages, like I mentioned earlier, is we identify areas where we can slip line, if possible, right? So that is that, and then just a sewer service boundary, show you what our staff do. I think we have a staff, currently three staff members in collections with one open, opening one vacancy. So with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
Questions, Council? A couple. Number one, that last screen, it reminded me, it, Newell Mobile Home Park, or whatever they're really called, that's actually part of the Vallejo system?
Are you, you're speaking of this boundary here?
Yeah, or are we serving that?
I'm, I'm not certain.
Yeah, because I seem to recall that that was kind of an exception, and I don't know if it makes any sense to try to reclaim it, because it's part of the city, but.
If we're up in this area here, I know that there's, there is documentation. I know that it's a little odd here, as far as the, which areas are served by, by. Oh, you're talking down Lower Vallejo, sorry, I was saying Napa Sand. Yeah, no, I'll have to look into this one, I'm not real familiar with that, I'm only familiar with the upper one.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it makes any business sense to try to reclaim it. It's more of a, you know, you're part of the city, so we want you, versus this makes sense. So just, just curious. The real question I had is the NG project to expand our industrial capacity at the plant. Any status report on that?
Yes, we met with them today, as a matter of fact. We do, and we, we met with City Manager Holly, went through some things, had, we had questions. We do plan on, we have a town hall meeting coming up pretty soon, I believe it's on the 30th. So we're gonna meet with SIUs, so here's what, here's what we're planning on doing, and then later on, we'll have an update for Council.
Looking forward to that.
It's definitely moving forward. Today's meeting was with the operations staff, answered any questions that they had, some ideas that they had about how we can improve certain things, and the NG team agreed. All great ideas, today kind of brainstorming, and we do have the meat and potatoes right there.
Just a quick point of clarification, the, the meeting he's referencing on March 30th is a meeting we're having with some of those industrial customers. It's not a, a town hall where the public is invited.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, thank you.
We're gonna be talking chemistry and biology.
Just to be clear. Right, yeah, thank you for that.
Probably leagues above our capacity to understand it.
We used that darn word, town hall, right? Should've said something else.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you, Felix, that was great.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment? None? Anything online? No, we're good. Thank you for the presentation. Anything further for management staff?
Yes, Mayor, Park and Director Akita has an update on what's happening.
What's happening?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I'm here to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening here in American Canyon over the next two weeks. On March 23rd, we are going to be having a planning commission meeting that starts at 6:30 PM, in person or Zoom. On March 24th, ACCPF will be holding a wetland sunset photography hike at the Wetlands, and that's gonna be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On March 25th, Friends of the American Canyon Library, library will be, will be holding a book donation from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then on March 28th, American Canyon Fire Protection District will be holding a board meeting at 6:30 PM. On March 31st, city offices will be closed. And then on, looking just a little further out, on April 5th, we have an OSATs meeting at 6:30. And then we have a, on April 8th, we have a Newell Trail Cleanup Day, and that's a volunteer opportunity, and that's gonna be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lot of things happening out there. Moving on to Mayor-Council comments, committee reports, and then after that, future agenda items. Who do you have? Does Councilmember Oro still with us? He was, I think, signed off.
Mayor, he needed to sign off, he was not feeling very well. He gave us what he had, and then.
Good, well, we appreciate the time he had with us at that.
He gave us everything he got, but wasn't, he's not gonna be able to finish the race.
Councilmember Joseph? Well, I just wanted to emphasize on my report, if you look at the last page, I went to the Farm Bureau's Ag Day and ran into Board of Supervisor Chairperson Ryan Gregory, and Cleo, or I guess Cleo, the, the cow was there. And just as my way of trying to, to build a good relationship between city and county, Cleo helped facilitate good relations. And as it so happens, Ryan Gregory and I were part of the, what I understand to be the best leadership Napa Valley class, Class of 14. So I just wanted to point out, I'm gonna have a, a, art collection of pictures with me and inanimate objects demonstrating my appeal to cartoon features. But other than that, everything else is in the report. Well, we look forward to that, that happening there, viewing the, yes, et cetera. Councilmember Avadamos?
Yeah, there was just one thing. On Thursday, Councilmember Joseph and I attended the Fire District, or FDAC, the Fire.
Yeah, the, the Fire District Conference.
Yeah, the Fire District Conference, which was actually really cool. It was my first in-person, because I think we were made aware of it by Chief Kamisky, and that was during COVID. So we had an online one, but this was my first in-person, and I thought it was really great for networking. It's kind of like the league events that we go to, the league conferences, but everyone there is wearing fire stuff. So Councilmember Joseph and I actually both wore our firefighter polos, and we're working on getting women's swag, because all of the clothing that we have through our vendor is for men. So the polo that I wear is a men's polo, but it's just, it was just a really cool event, so I just wanted to let you know we were there.
Right. Vice Mayor Washington?
No, nothing to add.
Well, I just did a comment earlier on my A-BAG and League of California Cities North Bay Division meeting. Green Island Road shovel-ready, groundbreaking, put it that way. Congress Mike Thompson attended, well, spoke, so good to see that moving forward. I think just, given the importance of that, a periodic update is how we're achieving, completing would be helpful. I don't know if it's something quarterly, or as various components are underway. And that would conclude my report for the evening. Any future agenda items? I have a couple. First is a quick question. I know we're going to be doing the lighting and landscaping district engineers report in May. Is that going to be an opportunity where we can discuss, you know, how we can provide either general fund contribution or a different set of fees for people who want to use, primarily Shenandoah Park, but want to use it even if they aren't part of Vintage Ranch?
The short answer is yes. I have a longer answer, if you want it, we can talk off. The, the short answer is yes.
Because I think how we address it is worth discussion, the, the fact that it, it's gonna be covered is, is the real question. Beyond that, I have a couple of items that are kind of housing-related. Brent's still here. The first one is kind of a follow-up on the condo conversion or condo. How do we create incentives to actually have homeownership in some of these condo projects? So I'd like to have a, bring it back to Council for discussion. How do we make that happen? Because I, I feel like for now, what's happening is we approve something, the developer says, oh yeah, it might be a condo, but I can make more money as an apartment, so they, they seem to kind of blow us off. So I'd like to bring it back to figure out how we can make that happen, maybe through incentives, or if we actually have any legal authority to do it, that's even better. And then the second one relates to the issue of how do we go about calculating our, our densities? You know, right now, it seems like our technique is if you happen to have a 15-acre parcel, you calculate the density based on however it's zoned, and that's your density. And then if you included a, a housing density, it's 150% of that. But if half of the parcel can't be built, it seems peculiar that you get to take credit for land that you can't build on, and then leverage it by the housing density. So I'd like to have a discussion about the, what the rationale is, what methods we might have to better define how you start off with your baseline densities before the housing, the state-imposed density bonus kicks in, if that makes sense. If I were smarter, I would have been able to say it with less words.
No, I think we understand the, the question, and even the genesis of the question. I'm gonna talk with the city attorney, and that might be a subject of a, of a memo from the city attorney, because anytime you're talking about what someone can or can't do on their land, or what can or can't be considered has some legal implication. So whether that ends up being a, a staff report or, or a memorandum back, we'll kind of play that by ear.
I appreciate that. I recognize it's got a lot of implications, so we'll tread lightly, or at least tread legally, one of the two. Thank you. Okay, anything further from Council this evening? If not, thank you all. We've concluded our business for the evening. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
And be safe.
Good night, American Canyon.
It's wet out there.